Good afternoon, everyone. The Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. Rodriguez, will you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge, absent. Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
Allison, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Chair, we do not.
Any announcements, appeals, anything?
I would like to announce that the appeal of the project at 3425 Sea Ledge Lane, which was a coastal development permit amendment for a new pool, has been scheduled for City Council consideration on August 4th.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a review and consideration of our minutes and two resolutions for June Any comments? If no comments or changes, can I have a motion to approve?
I do have one comment. Mike, why don't you go ahead first.
You go ahead, I have no comment.
It was a comment on the, do you really have the resolution number, I'm sorry, on Sea Ledge Lane? Pardon me.
All right. And for the record, the question had been clarification on what the dry season is, and so planning staff will recommend including more specific information, the month and the condition.
That was my request.
Okay, any other comments? Jordan?
So I'll move all five of those with that revision.
Okay. You're also including then the minutes of June 18th and the resolution for June 18th?
You'd like to.
Okay, unless there's any comments or questions from anyone.
Mr. Chair, I was here on June 11th, but I'll need to abstain on the June 18th minutes.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention for June 18th. Okay. Our next item of business is a discussion item. There's no action being taken, just comments back to staff regarding a proposed on-street valet parking ordinance. Allison?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. And Commissioners, Derek Bailey will be giving the staff report.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Derek Bailey, and I'm with the City's Public Works Department and the Traffic Engineering Group. With me this afternoon is Rob Dayton. He's the city's principal transportation planner. The discussion item today is a potential valet parking ordinance, and more specifically, an on-street valet parking ordinance. It is a little unusual that we would come to the Planning Commission with a street operations ordinance. Normally, we go straight to the ordinance committee with that, but we, there is a bigger policy issue as part of this discussion, and so we have been soliciting a lot of feedback from the business community and various committees and commissions within the city. So we really appreciate your feedback and your time this afternoon. So the issue, currently, there's businesses operating on-street valet in the city, and some of the issues with that is the use of on-street parking spaces, whether for the valet stand itself where the pickup and drop-off is happening, or at times, the storage of the valet. So when the valet operators take possession of the vehicle, sometimes they're parking on-street as well. And there's also some traffic safety concerns. The Santa Barbara Municipal Code is silent to valet parking, so we don't have the ability to allow it, we don't have the ability to disallow it. So it creates kind of an awkward position to be in when we get complaints regarding some of the activities that are happening on the street, and as well, it creates an awkward position when we get requests from certain businesses that want to do valet parking, because we don't have the authority to permit it, and we don't have the authority to not allow it. So specifically, what is valet? It's the receiving or taking possession of a vehicle and moving that vehicle to another location for storage. And this discussion is specifically about those activities that are in the city's public right-of-way. There are valet operations that take place in the city that are on city property, like on the wharf or near the harbor. That's different discussion. This is specifically for on-street valet. Just by way of background, nearly 20 years ago, the Palace Cafe on East Cota Street made a request to the city to be allowed to operate on-street valet. That request was considered by the City Council and was unanimously denied. Fast forward nearly 20 years to today, the Entrada Development is under construction on Lower State Street. That development will include on-street valet on East Mason Street, and as part of the Entrada Development, they are building a parking garage. And the plan for the Entrada Development is they will have the valet operation, the valet stand, if you will, on-street on East Mason Street, and they will be storing the vehicles in the basement of the parking garage. The upper two levels of the parking garage, over 100 spaces, will be available for public parking. So the parking that is being displaced on-street by the valet stand is more than being made up for with the addition of the public parking garage. As well, there's about eight recurring on-street valet stands in various areas of the city, the downtown area, the funk zone, and the Coast Village Road area. Some of the benefits and impacts associated with on-street valet parking, the real benefit is the utilization of otherwise unused parking. And the example we've been giving for this is, say there's a business that wants to operate on-street valet, and nearby, there's an office building, and in the evening, that office building parking lot is empty. All the workers go home, and that parking lot is sitting there unused. Well, if the valet operator enters into a relationship with the owner of that parking lot, they can use that parking lot in the evening when it would otherwise be unused, so it's adding to the overall supply of the parking. So that can be a good thing. And as well, there's some businesses that like the added customer service that valet can offer. Some of the impacts, I'm going to ask Rob to talk about the city's Park Once policy.
The city's Park Once policy has been around quite a some time. Actually, it started in the Impacts to Growth, which was 1974, I believe. And that policy has a lot to do with why we're bringing this to the Planning Commission for your input, because it really feeds into the flavor of downtown and how people access downtown. That policy is that we design transportation access so that people are encouraged to come into one place in the downtown and then walk or use the people mover, as it's referred to in the Impacts to Growth study, now the shuttle, as you know, at the electric shuttle. And so the entire system, actually Victor Garza, superintendent of the downtown parking, is here, the staff too, and that's another reason he's here, because what he does is really encompasses how that works. So how does valet affect that? Well, it's, you know, it's not here to say it's good or bad, just to recognize that it would be a change, that, and two of the options really play to that, which Derek's going to give the options. But if we have people coming directly to a particular use, then what happens is they're going to that one use, that one business, and then they're leaving. The point of the Park Once is not just about a capacity, but it's about a Santa Barbara experience, so that all businesses in the downtown get noticed, I guess maybe is a good way to put that. You park once, and then you're walking by many, many businesses along your destination. And of course, the thought is that you will access many, many different types of businesses, or maybe you'll see one and return to one on a return visit, because you noticed it, you walked by it. So we're just highlighting that this would be kind of a shift, introducing a new way to go directly to a business and then directly away without that interaction and the things that, how that changes. There is another alternative that may be a little bit more in line with Park Once that Derek will get into, so you'd be looking for that. But that is a possible impact, again, and we're not suggesting, staff's not suggesting that that's a negative or a positive, just recognizing that that would be a change, and that if you did, in fact, with a valet ordinance and permission to do that, right now, we don't have a lot of valet operations, but in the future, if you did, because we promoted it, and now it's permissible, we could imagine a really cultural shift in terms of how that Park Once philosophy in the downtown works. So we're highlighting it.
Thanks, Rob. In addition to potential conflicts with the Park Once policy, other potential impacts is not all businesses can offer valet parking. Not all businesses have a street frontage that can accommodate valet parking. For example, most of State Street downtown, you just can't pull over, there's not room to do that. There's the potential displacement of a public resource, namely, street parking for private purposes, and as well, traffic safety concerns. The outreach we've done to date, we've talked to the Chamber of Commerce, the Coast Village Road Association, the Downtown Organization, the Downtown Parking Committee, the Transportation Circulation Committee, the Milpiss Association, the Restaurant and Lodging Association, as well, valet operators. And what we've heard is that businesses would like the ability to have on-street valet nearby, at least the ability. But the majority do not want the public realm used for valet vehicle storage. In other words, if we are going to do valet, make sure it's in a private lot, not in a public lot or not on the street. Just last week, we went to the Downtown Parking Committee, and their recommendation was allow on-street valet, but again, do not allow the storage of those vehicles in the public garages or on-street. So the big policy question, and this is really what you're, we're hoping you'll help us wrestle with, is what role does on-street valet parking have in our parking system? Is this an appropriate use of the public right-of-way? So this is the big question that we have to answer first, and if the answer's yes, then there's all sorts of operational details that will be half-to-worked out, but this is the big question, is what role does on-street valet have in our parking system? And kind of the second question, if the answer's yes, where should vehicles be stored? And again, to date, we've heard from, just about from everybody, that that storage should be in a private lot, and that would be staff's recommendation as well. Staff concerns, if we do go down the road, do we allow, formally allow, on-street valet? There are some staff concerns. Is this an appropriate use of the public right-of-way? Traffic safety concerns, you know, there are some issues that we've seen to date with on-street valet. The operators, they try really hard, they hustle, they try to provide good customer service, but sometimes that means that traffic safety is, corners are cut. The vehicle storage, that's a concern, and as well, enforcement resources. And what I mean by that is that there will have to be periodic checkups on the valet operations if we do allow them. If we establish permitting system of some type allowing on-street valet, there's going to be an expectation from the public that we manage this system well. And if there are issues and complaints that come up, staff will be expected to resolve those. And resources to do that is a concern of ours right now, because we're just not sure how that would work just yet. So we are going to lay some options out in front of you that have been talked about. Option number one is just a prohibition, but it allows for special events. So if there's a film festival, or somebody has a birthday party or something like that, where they need like a one-time operation, that would be a special event. But based on the feedback that we've heard from the business community, that doesn't accommodate that request. So they, like I said, the business community would like the ability to do on-street valet. The prohibition would go against that. Due to staff's concerns about the enforcement and the potential resources that it would take to enforcement, we're leaning a little bit towards this right now. Certainly, if the result of this effort is that we do allow on-street valet, that we'd certainly make it work as best we can, but we do have some significant concerns. Option number two, again, a prohibition, but it's an outright prohibition, no special events, just no valet on the streets. Option number three is allow on-street valet, and it would be a permitting system, so anybody, any business could approach a valet operator and say, "I want to have the ability to do valet out front of my business." They would come in, we'd permit them, and there would have to be periodic inspections and potentially enforcement. There would potentially be multiple valet operators that would allow for that. Option number four is, again, allowing it, but it's just a little different flavor with that. The city would go through a process to pre-qualify a single valet operator, and so if there were any businesses that wanted to do on-street valet, there would be one single pre-qualified valet operator. From an enforcement and operations perspective, it would be easier for the city to manage that, because we would be dealing with one single business instead of potentially multiple vendors. One business model that's been, that's being used in the city of Pasadena right now is called Universal Valet, and the, what happens there is there is a valet operator that operates multiple stands in their downtown area. And the way it works is you can drop your vehicle off at any of these stands and say, "I want to pick it up at the stand three blocks from there," and they'll have your car ready for you at a certain time and at that different stand. So when Rob was talking about the Park Once policy, that could actually complement that type of activity, because it would encourage the walking through downtown and potentially picking your vehicle up at a different location instead of pickup and drop-off from a single location, which really wouldn't encourage walking around our downtown. Next steps, we are planning to take all this feedback and try to craft an ordinance and take that to the ordinance committee in the fall of 2015, and depending on the results of that, we will then take it on to City Council. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm going to back the slide up and just put the big policy question. That's the big question we're really wrestling with today, and we would recommend that be the big part of your discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for staff before we go to public? Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification on one item, and that is, in your staff report, you explain that today's comments only, and that this ordinance, I imagine, because it's a public right-of-way section of the municipal code, does not come back to Planning Commission after the ordinance committee does their work. And I'd like just to confirm that that is the case, it's because it's not a zoning ordinance, but in there, what I don't understand is if the location of the parked cars is on private property, how does that interplay with this whole ordinance structure? I don't know how that would work. Would each of those sites then need its own planning permit, or, anyway, that's my point of confusion.
Mr. Chair, the first, the answer to your first question is, it will not necessarily come back to the Planning Commission again. It is not a zoning ordinance and therefore is not subject to the government code provisions requiring Planning Commission comment and review of the ordinance. The second question, in general, the private parking lot already exists, and the use of that parking lot at off-hours does implicate land use questions, but in general, the, you would presume that the private property owner only would contract with the valet service when they're not using their own, their parking lot for their own uses. If it came to a situation where a private property owner was operating their business and at the same time double-parking their business by contracting with a valet operator, I think that would be subject to enforcement, because they would not be providing their required parking for the use for which their property was allowed, in the development of that property. So it would have, it would, that, the valet use of these private parking lots has to be at a time when the, those parking spaces are not otherwise required for the land use on that property.
Thank you. I understand the basics of what I needed to know for now, but I may have a follow-up question on that part later on.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob, so could you help me a little bit more with this contradiction of Park Once policy? So I kind of get if I'm parking in a public lot two blocks down, and I'm coming to a restaurant up here, that kind of doesn't allow me to focus in on exactly where I want to go. But doesn't also free parking on the street, if I can park in that same block as a restaurant, contradict the Park Once policy too? I mean, if all I'm doing is coming downtown and going to a restaurant, that's all I'm going to do, and if I can park on the street in front of the restaurant, I've kind of circumvented that whole worry too, haven't I?
Yeah. Chair Thompson, Commissioner Jordan, absolutely, you know, coincidentally, of course, yeah, you don't necessarily have to walk next to other businesses. The genesis or the creation of that is, is kind of, has its roots in not wanting to be suburban, where you move your car for every use. That's where it has its roots. So the downtown is designed intentionally to not, we, most people in the downtown aren't providing their own parking at all, and it's the public supply that they're counting on. But yes, if coincidentally, you do find a public spot right in front of the business, incidentally, with valet, that space would not be available.
Right. So, but, possibly, potentially, so, and I get what you're saying, so, but if you, if you have eight or 10 valet operators assigned to specific businesses in this little four blocks, what you're saying is that can, that kind of, that just more erodes the overall feel of the Park Once and Walk than if they weren't there, right? That's your point? Because you were very careful to say it's not really a pro or con, a benefit or not benefit, but that would be the point, that you would see an erosion of that, right?
That's correct. And, you know, it's kind of hard, because, right, there's, we don't have a lot of valet operators operating on-street now, right? If there were a lot, then you could begin to imagine the effect that would have, right? Less walking between, you know, on the streets. Some people, some land use planners are pretty bewildered and impressed that we actually have a 13-block linear, long blocks, 500 feet of retail that works. The Park Once philosophy has a lot to do with why.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah, two questions. Help me out with your statement about public right-of-way being, you know, burdened by private uses. I get it. If I'm going to go down to a restaurant and then park on the street myself, that's not necessarily a private use of that right-of-way, but if it's, so just help me understand why that, why you made that statement, why that's private use. I understand where you're going, but is it legally have to do with that business being so popular that they can't park it, that it's, you're saying it's a private use?
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Higgins, I wouldn't use the word burdened with the public right-of-way, but as far as the private use of a, of the public right-of-way, it really comes from the philosophy that the public right-of-way, the streets are for everybody, it doesn't belong to anybody specific. And when a specific business is, has exclusive use over space on the street, then it becomes for the benefit of private.
Well, okay, I mean, I get the philosophy. I wouldn't say it's an exclusive use, it's they got it first. So they've put a car there from somebody else, and now when I come there and I'm not necessarily going to that restaurant or whatever, then I'm out of luck.
That is an argument as far as the vehicle storage, first come, first served. The valet stand itself is definitely.
Different. I'm talking about vehicle storage, all right. I'm going to struggle with that later, but tell me about why in your outreach, the use of public lots wasn't an op, or didn't appear to be a supportable option for storage in a valet program? So maybe underutilized public lots that could still be used in addition to the public right-of-way, or if you can't use it right-of-way, how come the feedback was that they didn't want, people didn't want public lots used as well?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Higgins, that option was talked about early on in the outreach process of what if we made use of public parking garages and public parking lots for vehicle storage for valet parking? And Victor, if you would come up and join us, you know, we had a lot of discussions with Victor Garza and his downtown parking staff about the impacts to their parking lot, and as we talked through it, it became more apparent that it was, it would be a difficult thing to accommodate, but Victor, if you could go into more detail.
What we found over the years is that, because, as Derek said before, the valet operations have been sort of unregulated, unpermitted, and just sort of operating on their own, we have found that there have been traffic safety issues, there have been problems with valet operators monopolizing certain areas, switching tickets, trying to avoid the parking fees, and other little annoying things, and so, and this is not something that we've begun, this is something that, this practice has been, I mean, not allowing the valet operations in the city lots has been something we've done from day one, before my time. So we've just been continuing that policy.
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. If we can go to page two of the staff report, I just want a clarification on the responses that you had to the, reaching out to the number of businesses and city committees. In the paragraph after the listing of the contacts that you had, third line, speak about the feedback received was mixed. The organizations representing business group generally felt that offering valet parking could benefit local businesses and should be allowed. The next sentence says, "The city committees were not as supportive. While some city committee members could support on-street valet parking, valet operations, no city committee members support using on-street and public parking supplies for vehicle storage." What's not said, I think, is what was the opinion of the local businesses to on-street and parking garages? That's not mentioned here in the report. Do you have that information?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campanella, yes. Every business group that we talked to, with the exception of Coast Village Road, was not in favor of on-street vehicle storage. The folks from the Coast Village Road Association thought that it was appropriate to store vehicles on-street.
And the public garages? What was your feeling on that?
No, generally, no. The feeling was private would be best.
One more question, if I can, on the, relative to the kiosk, if you will, for the valet parking, there's a number of areas in the city that have white curb for loading zones, say in front of the libero, et cetera. Those loading zones are restricted all day long?
24/7.
Okay. Whether there's activities going on or not, those parking spaces are not available?
That's correct.
Valet, however, would just be utilizing area for the kiosk during their hours of operation, which are primarily in the evening. So the impact there, I'm just, would be somewhat less relative to available street parking, because they would be gone at a certain hour after the festivities were over. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I have three questions right now. The first is on page five of our staff report, and this goes to one of staff's concerns. It's regarding enforcement resources. The section at the bottom of this page, Management of an On-Street Valet Parking Program, is a reference to a possible need for routine inspections with a new ordinance and a certain kind of permitting system that staff would need to implement. So, Mr. Bailey, could you talk to us about if there's only certain types of permits that require routine inspections, could we leave that out, exclude that from a permit associated with a new ordinance to lessen the burden, for example, on staff enforcement? to, to lessen the burden, for example, on staff enforcement, proactive staff enforcement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, as far as inspections of the public right-of-way go, they are fairly routine. Outdoor dining is not routine. It's more of a static operation, so it's not a thing where you catch somebody in the act, so to speak. But is, with a lot of the permits that we issue, for example, for temporary traffic control when there's construction going on in the street, that type of activity does take routine inspections. And due to the nature of valet parking with the continuous operations and the potential for some of the activities we're seeing right now to be repeated, we would think that a certain level of inspections would be appropriate. Certainly if the direction we receive is establish a permitting system with no inspections and just leave it to be complaint-driven, that's a potential as well, but.
That is a possibility as allowed in our current charter or how we craft ordinances or allow for permits. That, there's, there's no specific prohibition against excluding this, a routine inspection. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was my first question. The next question I have is on page six of our staff report, under coastal zone. There's a reference here and some comment about coastal commission. And coastal commission staff's views, valet parking in the funk zone, which is the coastal zone, and since, my question is, the timing of crafting this kind of an ordinance in light of the fact that we are currently involved in updating our local coastal plan to be submitted to the coastal commission next year, which could then take another year for certification. So what, what is the delicacy or the sensitivity of enacting such an ordinance now if there's a possibility that the coastal commission will not view it favorably, potentially not support it? Would we then have to revoke an ordinance once we implement an ordinance if, depending upon the commission's views, that commission's views of such an ordinance?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, the ordinance would be citywide. So it would certainly encompass coastal areas, which would be the funk zone, and Coast Village Road would be the two affected areas.
Right.
But it would also cover downtown. I guess the, the outcome of the update would dictate what types of activities could happen moving forward as to whether or not they would ultimately be allowed or not. We did have a meeting with the planning staff about six or nine months ago to talk about this. And we have identified some language in some other local coastal plans that allow valet, so that's being looked at right now.
Is that, is, is it, the parameters of those types of ordinances embedded in, embodied in the staff report for consideration today or, you know? In other words, an ordinance of, a valet parking ordinance that would be acceptable to the coastal commission? Do we have such language or such parameters for our consideration today, given that it says coastal commission staff is concerned? So if there are communities, coastal communities, that have valet parking ordinances where the coastal commission is not concerned, what do those ordinances look like? That's what I'm getting to.
Commissioner Schwartz, the, I believe it's really in the operational details of what the, how the actual valet would operate. A valet ordinance can be very simple, like for example, the city of Antura, they have an ordinance that says basically the, the traffic engineer can issue permits for valet parking. And then it's up to staff to fill in all the details about the operational parameters. The city of Los Angeles, for example, they've got a 10-page council-approved operating system that they have to follow. So there, there's a lot of variance in between. My understanding of what the coastal commission's concern was, was the displacement of on-street parking. So if we were to enact an ordinance and a permitting system that allowed it, working with planning staff, I would, I would expect that the, the valet and the use of private lots would have to demonstrate that there's an overall increase to parking supply and an, an increase to the, access to the coastal area.
Okay. I'll come back to that during my comments. My last question then is on page seven, and maybe you've sort of already answered this. There's only a reference to Pasadena in terms of a different type of valet service, this universal valet service. And I'm just wondering if, in fact, any other communities have been studied that either reflect exactly what staff is sharing with us today and suggesting comments on, or, or that you would recommend we turn away from because it hasn't worked in those communities? Sort of, you know, best practices, so to speak, tried, tried and best practices and especially customized for Santa Barbara, given, given what we're looking at today? Any thoughts for us on that?
Commissioner Schwartz, thank you for bringing that up. Most cities that we looked at do have valet parking addressed in their municipal codes, especially the coastal cities that are like ours or even larger, like I mentioned, Los Angeles. From the folks I spoke with, there's been positive experiences and not-so-positive experiences, and there doesn't seem to be any correlation to the ordinance itself. It's just the, basically the operational parameters that are set up. It's, it's more how the program is administered. And so that, that's really our concern is we want things to be done well, we want it to be perceived well in the public, and we don't want the public calling into us saying, I saw X, Y, and Z, and us being put in that position of enforcement. And that's why I, I think it would be appropriate to have periodic inspections, just to make sure everything's going well. So it, it really comes down to the operational parameters.
Okay. Excuse me. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions at this time.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you. What was the reason we, you, you brought this forward in the first place? In the staff report, it says there have been no reports of incidents or accidents. Is it complaints? You, you mentioned that Palace Cafe had a request 20 years ago. Well, that's a long time in gestation to come forward here, if that's the only thing that caused you to come forward. The Entrada was put into the development agreement to handle check-in and checkout of the hotel portion of it. So it makes sense from that standpoint. And those are the only two examples you used as to why you brought this forward. So what, why now?
Mr. Chair, there haven't been any incidents in terms of collisions that we know of. That's what I, that's what I mean by incident. But we do get complaints. The police department have responded in the past, and they're, they get complaints as well, as well as the public works department. And so there, we just don't have any tools right now to, to address some of the complaints that we're getting. The Entrada example is, is interesting as well. Because the municipal code does not address valet at all, we actually don't have the authority to give exclusive curb space to the valet operator that's going to be working with Entrada. We can set up a loading zone that they can use, but there's nothing stopping anybody else from pulling in and out of there as well. So as part of this process, one of the, one of the details that we do want to incorporate into a potential ordinance is something that accommodates Entrada or situations like Entrada in the future. So we're trying to address concerns that we've heard from the public, as well as this operational detail with Entrada.
So the complaints presumably are like people that wanted to park in a place and they, valet said, no, you can't park there, so they call you up and say they don't like that?
Yeah, that's, that's the most common one. The traffic safety concerns that we've noticed are mostly on Coast Village Road. There's, most of Coast Village Road has nose-in parking. There's a lot of double parking going on out there. There's parking in the bike lane, parking in red curb. So there's, there's that type of thing that we get complaints about as well. But the most common type of complaint is the commandeering of on-street parking spaces.
Interesting you bring that up, because I was going to talk about that later. In your staff report, you talk about one of the egregious behaviors is parking in the bike lane. How many bike lanes on what street and how many cyclists are impacted? Can you give us any figures, or is this just gut feel?
It's on Coast Village Road.
Okay. I observe that weekly.
Yep. And I, I don't have.
And I don't observe any cyclists going by.
I don't have cyclist volumes on Coast Village Road, but nonetheless, it's not an appropriate thing to do.
Okay. And my last question here is, do you presume in your discussions that the valet service is being paid for the parking? Or is it a, a service that's being provided by the retailer and they do it for tips only? In your discussion about commandeering parking places, are they being paid by the public for those parking places? Is that your assumption?
My assumption is that the restaurants, it's usually associated with restaurants, are paying the valet for services. There, there may be additional valet services being offered for a fee. We're not aware of what those relationships are.
Okay, so the, the retailer contracts with the valet operator to provide a service to their customers, but the valet isn't charging the public for the parking space. They're only providing the service that the retailer has contracted for. And if the public is happy, they give them a tip. But that's, that's the only charge of any kind, right?
That we know of.
Any other questions before we go on? The public speaker slips that we have is David Grossman. If there are any other members of the public that want to talk, just come on up and drop your speaker slip off with the stair, staff. And is David Grossman here? Doesn't want to talk? Sheri Villanueva?
Thank you for allowing me to be here. And we, I am a, a local business owner, own a couple of restaurants down in the funk zone, the Lark and Lucky Penny specifically. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about a, a real, live business and how it's affecting, valet parking is affecting a real-life business. We were never contacted by the city to give an opinion on valet services or the press or any other place. So, excuse me, having a public forum to talk about that is very valuable. Parking is a critical consideration. It's one we take very, very seriously as business owners. It's something that we work tirelessly to try to solve. If we don't and our guests don't have a good experience, that affects us as a business. And so we take it very seriously and we do everything we can to be proactive in what we're developing. The city of Santa Barbara, we've worked with them for years now in making sure that our businesses and what we're putting into these properties meet the city requirements for parking. And all of our businesses meet the city requirements that were given to us when we developed them. Sometimes those, parking, it's not operationally sufficient. So in order to be operationally sufficient, we as local business owners take proactive steps to try to meet the requirements of our guests. One of the things that we do at the Lark is we actually rent three private parking lots. We can park upwards of 80 cars off the city streets at one single time through a valet service, putting those cars safely into private lots. It's very expensive. Restaurant business is notoriously difficult, very, very hard to come out at the bottom with any kind of, you know, bottom line in the black. We contract valet services and rent private lots, one, to ensure the safety of our guests, two, to provide a service to our guests that increases their experience of our restaurant and the neighborhood. And we take 80 cars at a time off the city streets. We feel like that's a huge effort proactively to try to alleviate any kind of parking congestion that's happening in the downtown funk zone area. We also make that service available to anyone, so anyone from the public can come and use our valet service and pay for it themselves. As a restaurant, we cover the expense of the valet for our guests, but anyone is open, and it says it on our sign, if you'd like to use the valet service, you're welcome to do that as part of the general public. We never commandeer public parking spaces on the street for exclusive use of our valet services. We never save them or don't allow other members of the public to use those spaces. And we make every effort to put all of our guest cars in our private lots. And, and I think if any of you have ever been there, and if you haven't, I welcome you to come, you'll see a model that's working. And it's been a very, very important part in bringing the local and visitor populations back down to the funk zone to see a thr, a new and thriving business district. And we think that's a really important thing for the city of Santa Barbara. There are also other things that we do proactively as a business to try to alleviate traffic congestion. One of the things we did is we initiated an effort with our landlord to put in a bike parking corral. We got the landlord to pay for the parking corral, and in collaboration with the city handling installation, we were able to put a, you know, giant corral that allows us to park many more bicycles and make bicycle parking very easily accessible to people coming down to the neighborhood. We also publicize city lots, not for our use, not for private use, but for guests who are coming to the neighborhood. There are three public parking lots within a three-block walking distance of our restaurant. We tell people all the time, please go to the visitor lot, Helena Avenue, the State Street parking lot at the train station. They're all underutilized lots that are in the neighborhood, providing more parking, but, but educating people that those lots are there and available is a really important step, again, to putting more cars in safe places and not keeping congestion on the streets. So, you know, I, I think it's, as we look towards an ordinance and we look towards solutions for this, what I would request from the city is that we work in collaboration with business owners. We're dealing with cars and parking and guests and business issues real-time, and it's in our best interest to solve them in a way that, that meets our guest needs, but also meets the requirements of the city. And so I, I welcome anyone from the city to call me, to work collaboratively, collaboratively, so that we can come up with solutions together that really makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie?
Mr. Chair. I have questions for the speaker.
Ms. Villanueva, Commissioner Pujol has a question for you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming here today. I think you helped answer some of the questions that I had about some of the valet services now, and, and yours was, is one that's mentioned in the staff report. So I understand from what you're saying is that basically it's a complimentary service to a guest of the restaurant, and then others that aren't eating at the restaurant can pay for that service, and that you only use private lots.
Correct.
Okay. So just a little bit more on that. If someone is a guest of the restaurant, yet they want to stay out in the funk zone till closing hours, are they allowed to stay? Or, or do they need to leave, say, when the restaurant closes or something like that? Does the lot also close? So I guess what I'm trying to say, if you are parking once and using the restaurant and then going late-night bar, whatever other businesses are open in the funk zone at that hour, is that something that's factored in? How do you treat that?
We don't put a time requirement on the parking. If someone has not retrieved their car by the time our, we're going to close, we will take their keys. We usually generally put the car in a locked parking lot, which is our private lot, parking lot, and put their keys in the safe, and they can retrieve those keys in the morning. And that's how we would handle it.
So for all practical purposes, then really they only have till closing time of the restaurant? Because you have the keys, you have no way to.
Their own car, correct.
To retrieve their own car.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my next question is, your onsite lot, do you also valet and tandem park in there? Or is that open and available and then you only use off-site private lots?
We do both. So we park inside of our own lot and we use off-site private lots.
But you probably don't tandem park in there because then you might block somebody in who parked their own?
Correct. And, and there's always adequate staff standing right in front. If anyone needs access to their car, a car to be moved, they're always available to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Hay?
My name's Katie Hay. I manage the property where Sheri Villanueva and the Lark affiliated businesses are tenants and was involved in the adaptive reuse of that property to be able to create an environment where people felt like it was a destination that was safe and pleasurable to be. I will say that in the three years leading up to the actual completion of the project, I will say that in the three years leading up to the actual completion of the project, the parking situation down there was intensely utilized by homeless RVs, transient vehicles, and it was a challenge to be able to create an environment where people felt it was safe to be able to actually go down there and patronize the businesses that are there. Fortunately, the infusion of new businesses and the improvement of those properties has created an environment where people enjoy being there. And I think it's a complement to what the city is capable of doing, given some of the underutilized or possibly decrepit buildings that are floundering in the area. As having witnessed the operation that the Lark has utilized over a period of time, I would say that it's kind of the model of where I see this valet program actually going. Because it was something that was undertaken by the business owner who personally went out and contracted for these lots. It wasn't the valet company that did that, it was the business owner. And understanding that her guest experience was dependent on being able to provide more than enough parking. She's added this as a service available to other business patrons, which is very generous of her. But I think it's a good model for what this valet ordinance could become. I do feel that having operators that maybe meet a city kind of checklist of sorts, like if I have a county-approved or a city-approved historian, you could put together a list of city-approved valet operators that would be available for people to choose from, which I think would be a better solution than necessarily going with a mandated one-operator provider. But it would give the Transportation Department the ability to control from a pre-screened kind of position rather than a complaint-driven, of course, is complaint-driven, but having to utilize staff time to be able to complete double checks of operators. So, I actually believe that what's happening in some of the businesses right now are a good model for what this valet ordinance could be, and I'm supportive of that. What I do think is that there's a fundamental issue here in supply that needs to be addressed. And I have attempted to be in regular communication with the Community Development Director and a number of other property owners within the funk zone to try and put together a business improvement district down there that would be able to support the construction of a multi-story lot. Unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of the central business district's zone of benefit for parking, which is a great impediment to anybody running a successful business down in the funk zone. So, if we were able to parlay this opportunity into the bigger picture, which is, there's a supply problem in, you know, perception and perhaps in practical application, but I don't believe that the funk zone or any part of the waterfront is going to become less popular. It will only become more popular. So, if we could be more proactive in looking at opportunities such as a multi-story lot at Garden and Cabrillo, where we could accommodate all the beachgoers and the waterfront and Stern's Wharf and funk zone-adjacent businesses, that would be very helpful. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Ken Oplinger.
I'm the Commissioner's Ken Oplinger. I'm the President and CEO of the Chamber of the Santa Barbara Region. We represent about 900 businesses and about 45,000 jobs here in the region. You know, I think an example like Lark and Lucky Penny is something that we ought to be looking at to try and solve this problem. And we stand ready to work with you to try and craft, I think, an appropriate regulatory environment to have that occur. One of the things that I think is important for us to remember is that when you have a situation like this and you just heard the previous speaker speak on the idea of the scarcity of parking, what the Lark and Lucky Penny have done is they've essentially brought in 80 new spaces into the funk zone that wouldn't otherwise be available. They've pre-negotiated use of those private spaces for folks who are in the funk zone so that their clients have parking. And that's not something that you would normally have access to. I think we can take that model and we can look across the downtown area and do other things as well. We know, for instance, there are a number of businesses that are on West Victoria who would love the opportunity to be able to have a valet parking service. And I think if we can look at examples like this and maybe even bring businesses together so that we have a couple of key places in the downtown area, not on state, but a couple of key places where we can aggregate that valet parking, they can find that private parking elsewhere to be able to take those cars. It's going to add into the mix, the parking that we have available, and it's going to benefit all of us. So, my message today is, we want to be an active participant in this. We want to help you craft something that makes sense to our members and to businesses here across Santa Barbara. And we thank you for the time that you're going to put into helping craft this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that wants to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close the public testimony and bring it back to the Commission for comments and any follow-up questions. Who'd like to lead off? Commissioner Campanella?
One question, if I can, for staff. On the La Entrada parking garage that's to be built, they're going to be available for public parking, is that correct? So, if in fact, one of the businesses or if, let's say, some of the spaces that the Lark is talking about is precluded in the future due to development, when we're talking about garages, if the La Entrada wanted to allow parking at night for a specific restaurant or valet parking, they would be, since it's their own parking garage, they would be able to do that?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, the Entrada parking lot is a private parking lot that will be operated like a public parking lot. So, part of their conditions of approval is that that lot be operated in the same way that the city public lots are operated, which is similar to San Nuevo, which is a private lot but operated as if it's a public lot. So, if valet parking is not allowed in public lots, then we would not allow it in the Entrada lot.
Yeah, that's the point I was trying to get to. So, they would be, whatever policy we come up with, whether city lots are allowed for this purpose or not, it's going to affect that private lot, that private garage as well for La Entrada. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jordan.
Rousting, huh? Derek, could you put up the rest of the questions? Well, was there, there was more, there was another question too there, wasn't there? So, just so I answer your question, I'll just tell you, I can't answer your question because I think the answer to that first question really has as much to do with which one of the subsequent choices of those four choices might fit in with your question. So, and I don't know if you're going to look at us today to come up with a majority opinion, so I'll just respond and then we'll see where it goes. But I, depending upon the method of, you had four suggestions, but depending upon how that looks, I really don't have a problem with using a street presence for either the start of the process or for storage, as long as the end result benefits everybody, benefits the general public. So, a combination of, I think you did one through four, but in our staff report, it's A through D, of D, which is a universal-type valet service, and A, which is a, I'm sorry, and A, which prohibits anything else, would be my preference. I would definitely point to some of Ms. Hay's comments that you shouldn't, I wouldn't narrow it to one provider. I would figure out what a good number of providers are. I would look to you to make this into sites that, I'm extremely aware of Rob's conversation with me on the erosion of the downtown experience, and that the city would play a role in picking the sites for the start of the valet parking experience, not necessarily let the businesses pick the sites. So, we would look for locations to start the valet experience, whatever that led to, that would continue to benefit the Park Once and Stroll amongst downtown, rather than emphasizing the, I'm just going to this restaurant as a destination and the start of my experience is going to be in front of the restaurant where I get out of the car. I would incentivize private lot use and penalize public parking use, even though I would not prohibit it. But I would definitely work to find a method that incentivize the examples that you heard there by going out and finding unused nighttime lots. And again, I personally don't think you need to prohibit street use, but I would penalize it so that one would steer towards finding those. I think it's really important to get the players, like you've just heard, and we didn't hear today from any of the actual parking valet companies, but I think it's important to get them in the room and involve them in this discussion of what that would look like, and use their expertise that have been, that they've developed up to this time. And then, I too Googled some of the other choices that you had there, particularly the City of LA's, which I don't consider really a long ordinance. I think you said it was like 13, it's 10 or 13 pages. But I think you could also develop zones where this would apply and other areas where it wouldn't apply, because I think there's a particular focus or several focus areas where it really is an issue. But if you got out of those areas, even though it's a business district, maybe it's not that big of an issue. And if it ever became an issue, then you can include it. I also think that single, non-recurring residential shouldn't fall into this trap, that you should still be able to use that for a benefit in your neighborhoods, because I think that it is a benefit, so that it would not fall into an eventual ordinance. And City of LA, I think, also had a thing in there to talk about adjacent construction and the ease of getting the use of business valet services when you have adjacent construction that is negatively impacting your normal parking availability. I thought that was a good detail. So, I think I answered both those questions, but I'm off pretty good on tangents, but I'll wait to see what everybody else says too. But I think, you know, for the two points you're looking for, I don't really have any heartache with using city streets for the experience or for the storage, but I think we incentivize to get them off city streets and penalize to keep that city street use at a minimum. I think people are, they're just people who are going to park down there anyhow. And I think we sort of spread out our bets with multiple vendors as part of our RFP. We leverage some of the talent that's obviously in the room and is elsewhere, particularly down in the funk zone, I think, is a great example. And that's the starting point for how you develop this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
One of the missing pieces of your staff report is the do-nothing option. So, we're apparently being dragged to do something, right? Don't answer that. So, I'll agree with Commissioner Jordan in concept. I think the way we're headed is a good one. It sounds like Decision C is where we're headed to develop a program. So, you know, I can appreciate the Park Once, you know, concept or program or policy, but I don't think it necessarily conflicts with what we're talking about. We're talking about bringing people downtown in the evening, when I have to imagine the majority of people are, they're going somewhere in the evening from the neighborhoods or going single-purpose. We have an aging population too that is going to rely more on, you know, traveling once for one out to dinner and that's about it. So, good discussion, but I don't think this program necessarily conflicts with the Park Once policy, given that most of the valet operators are operating at night. And, you know, in certain parts of town, well, funk zone, you've got to deal with the problem. The problem being not necessarily anything that we all created, but the problem is you've got all these non-conforming uses that can't redevelop. And when they do try to redevelop, we make it hard on them because it's got to be an OC-dependent use, it's got to be parked at $1 per $250 or whatever it is, and then they don't draw any customers because there's nowhere to park. So, I do feel like this is heading in the right direction in terms of supporting the businesses that are down there. We do make it, I'll just say, the bar's very high barrier to entry in terms of, you know, being a successful entrepreneur anywhere in town, especially in the restaurant business, especially down in the funk zone. It's got to be a huge risk. So, I can appreciate where staff is offering a way out in some degree. So, I do support the program in terms of on-street valet operational stands and storage. And I would imagine that your reference in here in Item C, relationship requirements and concurrence for neighboring businesses is going to be, play a large part in whatever program is developed in terms of, are you going to apply for a permit? Well, we'll issue you that permit to be an operator if nobody else complains. Or maybe take, for example, the permit's going to constitute where you can store your vehicles. If it's on-street, it's got to be in an on, it's going to be maybe for a duration of time where that on-street parking is not, there's no demand for that. On the funk zone, right above the highway, that whole strip of Montecito Street is not high demand, so maybe that could be delineated in the permit for a year or two, or there's a renewal at some point in case it gets busy from businesses that are springing up down there. And I do support use of the public lots. I think those, with the issuance of a permit, those operational controls are manageable. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I appreciate that this item's come to the Planning Commission because parking is one of the most popular and controversial issues in the city that we regularly wrestle with. So, even if this doesn't need to come back to the Planning Commission, I think today is an important opportunity for inquiry and discussion. My general overarching considerations, and I wanted to share this before I go to staff's four specific concerns, is that I don't want to complicate a process. If we put a new process in place, an ordinance permit, I don't want us to overbuild this thing that then requires layer upon layer of additional staff resources, compliance resources, complications for the public to understand with which to comply. And hopefully, in engaging with the business community and the public at large, we'll work together to problem-solve. And there have been questions about, well, are there problems? Well, I myself have received numerous complaints. So, the question is, how do we adequately consider those complaints in the context of it being of value to both customers and businesses? The realization that we are not going to build our way out of or even into sufficient parking in the City of Santa Barbara. So, we have to be more creative with the real estate that we have, daytime use, evening use, lack of use in the evening, as Ms. Villanueva described, the Lark does. So, with that, I want to address all four staff concerns, appropriate use of the public right-of-way, traffic safety, vehicle storage, enforcement resources, and then these policy questions. And I'm just going to go right through the staff report because I think the staff has sequenced this pretty easily. First, in terms of balancing the Park Once policy, which I think, first of all, was an enlightened policy as implemented at the time, and it makes sense where we can effectively apply it. And I think downtown lends itself certainly much more to this than the funk zone has. However, the funk zone is in a rapid state of redevelopment. And I think between the city lots that are there, possibly underutilized, some of them very underutilized, along with the new Entrada lot, I think if all of the interests, the city, the businesses, et cetera, come together, I think it's possible that we may have close to sufficient parking, but not in the way we're managing it today. So, I think collaboration and creative planning is key. Let me go again right through the staff report. I'm going to jump to page three. I've had some concerns about the use of the valet stations being parked in the public right-of-way. I do think that is a private use of public right-of-way. So, I'm not sure what to do about that because there simply are some properties that don't have the public space, the on-street or curbside space in which to have the valet stands located. So, I wish I had an answer today. I don't, I don't know how to address that. But, so let me shift to what I have given a lot of thought to, which is the parking of the cars for these customers who are going onto private property for the, whatever their interests are, in the public right-of-way. I'll use myself as an example. If I'm going to the Lark for dinner, I'm going to find someplace to park myself, hopefully, to be able to patronize that restaurant. And it's so much more convenient to me, I haven't availed myself of this, but if I were to... so much more convenient to me, I haven't availed myself of this, but if I were to, to simply pull up, get out and have someone else take care of my parking. The question is, where does that car get parked and what's fair and efficient and safe, I would say? So if there are spaces on the public street and the public right-ofway to park these cars, that is entirely reasonable to me, because I would have parked there anyway myself if I had the inclination, if I wanted to spend the time and drive around and find those spaces. However, I think that, again, I'm going to come back to what I think is really a pressing community collaboration need, and that is for us all to look at our combined real estate of where we have parking inventory and figure out how to help the businesses, help customers, and the public at large to park cars that would otherwise maybe have to park many blocks away from a business or businesses they want to patronize and park on other private properties. So if they're parking in the public right-ofway, to me, that's what the public right-ofway is for. It's for members of the public who come and are patronizing anything they want to patronize in that community. Is that, I don't know if that makes sense, Mr. Dayton, or yes? Okay. Certainly, and I think Mr. Thompson may have asked about this, any complaints about whether it's intimidation or the parking of these cars illegally, and certainly I wouldn't support that, or trying to intimidate the public to not park in public spaces in the public right-ofway, to prevent those individuals from either parking in the area altogether or forcing them to use valet. That would not be, so I don't know how you regulate that. That seems to me, yeah, Mr. Dayton's shrugging his shoulders, too. And I, personally, I haven't seen much of that, so I don't know how many complaints the city has received. So I'll move on from there. So I think I've addressed reduction of on-street parking. Local valet operators, so I want to combine this topic, which is on page four, actually with the last item on page seven, and that's this notion of a universal valet service. I'm not particularly in support of one valet operator for a universal valet service. In general, I'm not in support of the monopoly in this sense. I think that, over the years that we've seen various valet operators come and go, anecdotally and from feedback I've received from members of the public, most of the valet operators, the well-known, popular valet operators, are upstanding businesses. And they understand they're only going to be in business if they both respond effectively to their clients, as well as the public at large, who are driving up and availing their cars for valet parking. So I would rather not see us go in the direction of a universal valet service, even though I understand this could be an ease of administration for the city itself. I don't think there's a greater good there. So let me go to page five. I asked about this in terms of the permitting. And I'm really trying to find a way or propose a way forward that would require minimum enforcement resources, because I don't think that layering on enforcement for the city is the right direction to go in. It's, first of all, it sets up an expectation that we're going to add enforcement resources in our human resources areas, and that then we will proactively, you know, monitor and enforce without looking to the public to complain, you know, on a complaint basis. I don't think that's a particularly prudent approach. I don't know that routine inspections would be required if, and perhaps it was Ms. Hay who mentioned this, a pre-screened, authorized list of honorable valet operators, perhaps something like that. And I think we have certain types of authorized lists elsewhere in the city. And I, so I would recommend we use, we use an approach, something like that. I don't know if there are other permits in the city, and I, you know, I don't need this to be really a question answered by staff, but what's the simplest type of permit? Or I would advocate for the simplest type of permit that would address staff's concerns, minimum enforcement, but vet these operators up front, and also make it clear then to the businesses that engage with or contract with the operators, what they can assume the city has pre-screened for. Since we don't have that process currently, who knows what type of research and validation is being done on any of these valet operators? So perhaps that's an added layer of assurance that both the businesses would have, the merchants, what have you, and the users of the valet service and the city. Maybe that's a way to get at it, again, without layering on undue layer of bureaucracy. Now, as to the Coastal Commission, I do have this concern about the timing. You could tell that from my question. Maybe there's nothing we can do regarding the awkwardness of the timing of this type of an ordinance being enacted, and then perhaps two years hence, when our LCP is being certified by the commission staff, they find that our ordinance is not acceptable. I don't know. Do we just look to modify the ordinance at that time? I guess, you know, I guess that wouldn't be a terribly burdensome process, but it would be unfortunate if we had to do that, because we would have the whole community going in a certain direction, have all this work that we would have done with the business community to collaborate and be creative problem solvers, and then have it potentially undone by the Coastal Commission. And so I don't know if staff has given any thought to the timing of enacting such an ordinance in conjunction with the LCP certification by the Coastal Commission. So I think I've touched on, by the way, in traffic safety, which was the first item you put up on the screen, Mr. Bailey, I think if we try to enable the businesses and the valet parking companies to move the cars out of the public right-ofway as quickly as possible, and that means creating these additional partnerships with the private parking lot owners. So, again, the Lark, you know, you know where you can go. These three lots that you've contracted with, they know where they can go park the cars, as opposed to the valet parkers driving around and around, queuing on the street. It's the queuing that I think is very dangerous. And I've already seen some near misses. This is myself. I talked about vehicle storage, enforcement resources. I think I already covered that. I think I've probably touched on all of my thoughts and my comments today. I'll be interested in what the rest of my colleagues have to say about the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. I'll start with a couple of follow-up questions. The first one is, in terms of, I think it's called Alternative D or Option D on page seven of the staff report, I was curious as to whether staff had thought through what the hours of operation and cost would be for that type of a service.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pujol, no. We've done very little research on the universal valet concept. At this point, it was just an idea that's actually come up in the last few weeks. So we're just telling people about the concept and gauging interest. If there is an interest, we will do further research.
Okay, thank you. Get back to that in my comments. Second question that I have for staff is, for these areas that we've described, or areas that you can envision being covered by any of these options for valet service in the future, which of those areas, I guess what I'm trying to sort out is, which of those areas have, are seriously impacted by the lack of parking in relation to the businesses in that area, and which aren't? Because I'm trying to distinguish between those areas that have parking problems that we're trying to deal with, and this being an option for dealing with the parking problem, or B, is this, you know, those areas which might be providing a convenience for certain businesses and maybe not necessarily related to a parking problem?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pujol, we've mentioned the three business districts, the downtown, the funk zone, and the Coast Village Road, and I would say they all have parking problems to varying degrees. Obviously, my perception is the funk zone can be the tightest right now in terms of limited parking supply, but they all have limits to certain degrees. You know, we made contact with the Milpus Association regarding the same thing, and they didn't have any strong feelings about this, just because, kind of what you're getting at is, they don't feel as though they have really tight parking there that maybe these other districts do right now. So I'd say those three business districts are probably where we're most talking about right now.
Okay. And following up on that just a little bit more. So say, for example, on Milpus Street, there really is, there aren't any public structures in that area, yet they don't really have a parking problem. But in downtown, there are public parking structures. In the funk zone, there are public parking, well, nearby waterfront, I guess, parking structures. So is there a relationship to the typical number of available spaces in the lot to the extent of the parking problem and the interest in valet service? Or is it kind of independent from that?
I imagine there is a relationship. I don't have a ratio or anything like that. I suspect that because of the demand for parking and the available supply and the desire to provide convenience for customers, that's what's driving business owners to seek valet services, to make it more attractive to come to their businesses. So I can't quantify it, but I suspect it's true.
But I suspect that it's not all three at once at all times. So it could be parking demand issues. It could be parking demand and convenience, or in some cases, it could be just convenience, the interest in providing valet service. I'm guessing.
The first two are related. Because we're sharing the parking supply, the Park Once is kind of generating this, not as much intentionally in the coastal zone at, sorry, at the funk zone. But when you're sharing a supply, not all the spaces are at your front door. So the supply is getting taken up by multiple uses, and then that affects the convenience for the customer to get to the restaurant. If they, they're not interested in walking great distances, then they may not go to that business.
Okay. And I'll get back to that point in a couple of minutes, but I have one more question first. I looked at the list of groups that were contacted, and it just came to mind, I was kind of curious why some of, say, like the taxi companies were not on this list. And the reason I bring that up is because it seems to me there's some competitiveness, say, between a taxi service and a valet service. I don't know if I have that right or not, but it would seem to me, because you could have a choice. You could pick up a taxi from a remote lot, and you could take a taxi over to the restaurant, or you could drive directly to the restaurant and have them park your car for you. So there just seems to be a relationship there with those kinds of things. I was just curious as to whether or not there had been any input from taxi companies or places like Uber, organizations like Uber or that sort of thing.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pujol, no. Quite honestly, I hadn't thought of that perspective and the relationship with the taxis.
I think they should at some point be notified or contacted, because I could imagine they might have something to say about it. And they're in similar services. They're providing a ride either to a restaurant or from a restaurant for people downtown and elsewhere. So here are some of my comments. I strongly agree that we need to be careful with the, any of the options related to providing valet services, even prohibiting them, because we want to be careful that it continues to support the Park Once concept. It is a key concept, and I agree completely with everything that Mr. Dayton had described yesterday about the importance of it and our policies that really tell us that this is the direction of the city. So I want to make that statement as basically a predeterminant of any choices that we make. In terms of, I think I'll go with the, I'll go with your policy questions first. Is this an appropriate use of the public right-ofway? I do not agree that public infrastructure and right-ofway should be used for convenience services for businesses. What is the real sticky point for me is, unless properly designed, and I don't see a way of doing that, it removes more of the self-parking options, no matter what you do. Any on-street use of the public right-ofway is going to remove spaces. If there's use of the public parking lots for valet services, it removes spaces. And for walkers and potentially even bicyclers, it will remove maneuverability as you walk along. So for all of those reasons, the public at large that is not choosing to use valet service and is trying to follow a Park Once philosophy is going to be damaged to some extent if use of the public rights-of-way or the public lots is utilized for this purpose. There's one exception to that, and that is if Option D, a universal valet service, is properly vetted out, the use of those stations for valet service, generally speaking, for any user, not just the patron of a certain business, I could see that being much more of a public benefit rather than a benefit to a single business. And that's my biggest concern, is having the valet service basically usurping some public facilities but for a private purpose. And so I have concerns where a valet service can necessarily establish its own hours, can't be used after the close of that business. I don't know how the cost would be controlled for that service. It can really end up providing preferential treatment to that business versus all the businesses. And that's why I like the idea, if it's properly done, of a universal valet service. I'm not so concerned, and I don't have a strong point of view at all, about whether or not that means one operator working for the city, or if it's a contractual arrangement with the city. Maybe it's multiple valets using the stands, but they're somehow operating under the auspices of some contractor or something with the city. And I don't really have a strong point of view, whether it's one or more, but I do think it needs to be organized by the city. And I like the idea that you could then drop your car off at one valet stand for whatever purpose you're using it for, and then pick it up in another location, because I do see how that promotes Park Once and how that actually fosters, you know, economic, probably benefit to all of the businesses in the area and not just the ones that can afford to do the valet service. So I do tend to prefer that system, if at all. I don't think I can support, couldn't support any of the other alternatives because of the use of the public facilities. So obviously, from my point of view, under Number Two, those valet uses, if at all allowed, should be limited to private lots. One other key aspect to me about the use of a universal valet service of sorts One other key aspect to me about the use of a universal valet service of sorts is that I think there needs to be some control of the hours of operations and the cost. Like, for example, the costs should not be, I guess, it should not be less, for example, than the cost of parking in a public lot and then parking your own self-car park and then walking from there. I think that the public uses of either the free on-street spaces or the public lots should be lower cost than the valet cost, because it makes it more accessible to more people. And then the hours should also extend to whatever the latest hour is that would allow someone to basically go from one kind of business enterprise to another and not be forced to leave and retrieve their car before basically the general area business is closed. So those are my, those are my comments. I have one last comment, and really, it takes a little bit of a step back, and that is because today we're looking at the idea of an on-street or, and a valet parking ordinance, let's just not even say on-street right there, but a valet parking ordinance. This is one aspect of what could be a larger, more multifaceted parking strategy for an area. So this is one piece, and I do believe that if an ordinance is, we move forward with any kind of an ordinance, we need to recognize that there are other types of services, like taxi services, like shuttle services and walking and biking, that need to make up this Park Once concept. And I would like to know that if a valet service is being proposed, that it's being proposed in conjunction with an overall strategy for parking in our impacted zones. So say, for example, if an ordinance would apply to the funk zone. I think we should also have an understanding of how much a part of the overall parking strategy do we expect this valet parking to be versus the creation of a parking benefit zone or other strategies that could also play in, like taxi parking zones and that sort of thing. So I'm not saying that work on a valet ordinance should wait until all those pieces are in one place, but we need some recognition that that's what our ultimate goal is going to be and that we start some discussions about what are other strategies that should also be employed in those impacted zones. Thanks.
Is that it? Okay, Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. After hearing the comments of the public and also staff and fellow commissioners, I think I'm in favor of option C, which is establishing a program subject to licensing requirements. I think, hopefully, the valet parking firms that are established in town, the businesses and the customers that use them are all after the same goal, convenience. And I don't think anybody's out there to cause harm or inconvenience or either to each other or the general public, and the control out there really is in the hand of the business owners. If their customers aren't being serviced properly, you get rid of that company. I mean, they have the ultimate way to enforce the fact that things are going correctly. I like the idea of a license, that there's adequate insurance, and I'm sure that most of the owners that are sophisticated are requiring that anyway, but I'm just saying as far as an ordinance, I'm looking at maybe including basic requirements that would not be too restrictive as we go forward, because we never know what's going to happen in the future, or what's going to be developed and not to be developed, or what the demand is. But at the same time, try to set the stage for reasonableness, cooperation, and also help preclude or nip in the bud any of the disturbances or negatives that either are real or apparent at this point, but can become real in the future, that we heard in today's staff report. So licensing, adequate insurance, as part of that license, an expectation of professional behavior, like any other licensee of the city, courtesy to other businesses, I don't know so much about concurrence, but let's say a courtesy at a minimum, allowing drivers that are not using valet parking to drop off in front of the establishment and then go on their way. There's a fee, of course, for the business licenses, and then if things do not work out or we see some of the negatives really actually come in, there's, the enforcement really is revocation of the license and non-renewal, which could be a very big negative impact. So I think it's in everybody's interest to have this work properly, and I think protection for the public under an ordinance and behavior shown that this licensing will produce, I think accomplishes the mission. As far as the stand on the streets, yes. I mean, we, I know we have Park Once, which is a definition. We also have in our climate plan strategy is come up with policies to support traffic management and reduce vehicle emissions. So one way to do that is Park Once, the other way is Park Quickly. In other words, if you have visitors or older people, as we age, and I would think at night at the restaurants that have valet parking, these are, you know, not a $10 meal. I mean, you have people coming downtown who want the convenience, rather than driving around or driving to the parking garages, the ability to get out of the car and have somebody take the car who knows where to park it right away is a way to reduce downtown congestion and, I guess in a way, some calculable amount of vehicle emissions. So that would be in line with our climate action plan. So we got Park Once and Park Quickly that the valet parking can help accomplish. So most of the items on your list, I think I covered. I'm not in favor of rate restrictions, I don't know why we would get into that, but I think the other ones that you have relative to what would be included under the program, I'm fine with. As far as the on-street and garage parking, public garage parking, I was at the meeting with Victor, was at where the discussions were held. As far as the garage parking, perhaps during this process, Downtown Parking Committee can look at the, or maybe revisit the irritants that occurred or potential irritants that have occurred in the past, and perhaps with, just take a look at communication and as part of the licensing procedures, if these difficulties that have occurred can be pointed out as part of the expectation of the valet company, maybe it might be something we might do on a trial basis, because I don't think we can always rely on private parking lots to help the demand. Those that get there first are going to have the agreements, but as other businesses from funk zone, for example, as a certain Quatchit Hut turns into Y Bar's, you know, already, how many off-site parking spots are there? So I try to stay flexible, because I think demand in the future, under an ordinance, to restrict something now, you don't have the flexibility on how to properly control something in the future. So I would think twice about eliminating public garages from part of this process. On-street parking, I think there too for consideration would be as part of this licensee, the expectation of what the behavior is to grab those spots. If this were daytime situation, I'd feel differently. Since most of this is going to occur at night in the evening, I think most of the parking spaces that are taken, one could actually stay overnight, right after 6 o'clock. They wouldn't have to move until sometime after 9:00 the next morning, where there's a 15-minute or hour and 15-minute parking spot. So these spots could be taken up and utilized all night and maybe two days if they park on a Saturday night, theoretically. So there could be some long-term use versus here, if there's an open spot, this is going to be a couple of hours. And again, it's the ability to park quickly. I know people said they don't really need it. I would say discourage it or not recommend it within and put some real methods of behavior if you are going to use it, but I think I'm along Mr. Jordan, who is putting a penalty on street parking and penalty on garage parking. I'd probably not encourage it, except to say it'd be allowed, but here's the expectations of doing it. Put pretty big restrictions on it on behavior, so they know that's tied into their whole license. And I might guess that companies in the future may try to avoid it altogether, just because of the risk, and stick with the private parking if they can get it, but at some point it might not be available. So I don't want to preclude them from using other facilities and cutting off something that I think is a real benefit, otherwise people wouldn't be using it. It's a way to get cars parked quickly. We're all getting older, and I think the ability to get out of our car and get into a spot is good for the patrons and also good for the businesses. So in summary, number six with a license, on-street valet is fine as far as the stand, and then considerations for both the parking garages and on-street parking is backup with encouragement, capital E, for the valet companies to try to find their own private lots. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After hearing some of my colleagues, I feel compelled to comment on two items in particular. First, regarding Park Once, I feel at this point, we're having to back into Park Once, because, quite frankly, over many years where there have been efforts to create a vision and a redevelopment and development plan for the funk zone, it has continued to be tabled, you know, and lost traction at various efforts along the way. So here we are with a fast redeveloping area of the community with no roadmap, I mean, literally and figuratively, no blueprint as to how we're going to redevelop in a way that allows for park, supports Park Once, supports parking, support all users of this neighborhood. And so we're at this awkward juncture where unfortunately, I think we're having to make tactical decisions as opposed to strategic, long-term urban planning decisions, and so it's feeling awkward to me for that reason, but I think we cannot turn away from the need and the economic importance of looking at valet parking in the funk zone. So I've researched various history and a couple of years had a lengthy conversation with Councilmember Randy Rouse, who he and I together have significant ongoing concerns about lack of overarching planning in the funk zone, and I suspect Mr. Rouse and I will be talking about that again soon, since we still feel like there isn't a comprehensive effort that's being brought together with all constituencies to do that. Secondly, I want to go back to for a moment and close out on one additional thought regarding a universal valet service. I had experience with this, not valet, but another type of service in the city of San Francisco, and what happens is with one service provider, yes, there may be conceptual oversight by the government agency, by the public agency. First of all, that takes enforcement resources, but additionally, if there are issues, and there are always varying types of issues with a contractor, with a service provider, it becomes difficult, first of all, to go through the process of monitoring, moving ahead on compliance, remedies for lack of compliance, and ultimately, if that service provider is not performing to contract, it still takes even longer to shut down the contract, and in the meantime, who suffers? The public. And then we have to go to a new sole-source contractor, and there's that vetting and implementation process. So for that reason, plus my comments about the need for competition, and we have healthy competition in our community among valet operators, and in my opinion, quite frankly, I think that has been a benefit to all concerned, because they're all looking to be in the game and provide quality service to the clients, to the drivers of the cars who are dropping off their cars. So for those additional reasons, Mr. Chair, I'm still not in support of a sole-source universal valet service. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of good comments there. I'll follow up with a few of my own comments here. One of the things that occurred to me was, we got into this, the reason you brought this forward, you said wasn't driven by accidents or incidents, but mostly by complaints, and the fact that some of the behaviors by some of the valets involve what are considered illegal traffic violations, like double parking, parking in a bike lane, parking on a red curb, cones in parking places to reserve a parking spot. All those issues could be dealt with by parking enforcement from the police department. You don't have to have an ordinance to take care of all those issues. A lot of discussion about downtown parking area, but all the examples and all of this discussion seems to revolve around Coast Village Road and the funk zone, where there aren't the parking facilities that exist in the downtown. There are not a lot of valet parking going on in the downtown area. So we talk a lot about Park Once in the downtown zone, but that's not where the problem is. The problem is in the funk zone and Coast Village Road, where we don't have a parking zone of benefit, and we don't have public parking facilities to speak of. So to me, a little bit of red herring involved here, dragging the Park Once and the downtown parking into the discussion when the issues are not in the downtown. As was mentioned by a couple of the other commissioners, many, if not all, of the valet operations are involved with restaurants for dinner hours. And a lot of the Park Once issues really go away if you're only going to go to dinner, you're not parking your car and running a whole bunch of errands and so forth. So the same thing can be said that, about some of these issues, like you mentioned earlier about parking in the bicycle lane, in the evening, bicycle lane that you mentioned on Coast Village Road gets virtually no cyclists, I can be corrected by that, but I've spent a lot of time in that area, and I seldom see a cyclist if ever. Where are they going? Onto the 101 on-ramp? That's what's blocked, and cyclists don't go on the 101. So my feeling is that we're talking about reducing on-street parking supply, but the people who would be able to park their own cars there anyway would be using the same parking. And one thing that you don't mention about in your benefits and problem analysis is that the valet parking provides a reduction in individual public driving around, circling the block, looking for a parking space. If you can drive up in front of the restaurant and the valet knows where he can take the car to, that precludes you driving around and sometimes multiple times around the block looking for a place to park. So that reduces emissions, it reduces traffic congestion, potential traffic fender benders and so forth. So I look at a lot of the valets that we're dealing with today as providing a service to the public rather than taking advantage of the public. In the staff report, you have a statement that is a little bit disturbing to me, because you say that, quote, "These operations are happening without consent or oversight of the city," unquote. This kind of infers that the city has to approve or oversee everything that we do, and that's not the case. We can do a lot of stuff without the city's oversight. And so far, over the 20 years since you say this has been brought up with Palace Cafe 20 years ago, it's evolved to being a pretty trouble-free situation. It exists where it's needed, and if there are some people taking advantage of it by double parking or parking on red curbs, that's, the police department has already the ability to control that. So the bottom line is, you know, considering that if we institute a new ordinance, it's going to take staff and budget to enforce it, I don't think it's justified at this point. I would personally vote for the Higgins option, and that's do nothing. But I know that having brought the train out of the station, you guys aren't going to stop here, you're going to go no matter what we say. So having said that, I would say that the only legitimate or reasonable option would be the option three, which is come up with some way to regulate it, but yet permit it. And the concept of having the city vet the companies that they would recommend to a business looking to try to hire a valet has some merit. In your policy questions there, is appropriate use of the public right-of-way? It isn't if the valet company is charging the public to park on the public street, but if they're providing a service to park the public's car where the public could park anyway, it's a very, very certainly it's a valid use of the public right-of-way. And if yes, where should the vehicles be stored? Obviously, if somebody sets up a valet system in front of a restaurant and they have their little valet stand off to the little valet stand off to the side and they can park in a private lot, that's the ideal option. But if there are parking places available and open on the street, there's nothing wrong with them parking there. So that's where I come down. I'd recommend the Higgins option, but I know you're going to go forward with it. So anybody have any further comments or discussion? Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like how you do that, say, "This is what I like," but let's call it the Higgins option. That was perfect. So I just want to, I feel like I have to defend a little bit the Park One, Once sort of philosophy based on what you just said. So in my mind, and I think Rob would back this up, it's not about me, it's about the downtown. So I'll just pick on a restaurant I go to frequently or we go to frequently. So if I'm going to Pescucci's and I know that I have an easy parking spot at 6:00 any night down by Lily's Tacos in those after 6:00 city spots, that encourages me, it also forces me to park and walk the downtown experience, even though I only know I'm going to Pescucci's, that keeps me on six or seven blocks, enjoying downtown, get exposure to all those things. If Laura has a yellow zone in front of her building on State Street that could conceivably be converted into a drop-off point for valet parking, that, and if that was to be encouraged or allowed other places in town, would erode the downtown experience that I'm being either encouraged or forced to enjoy. So it's not so much that I care that I'm only going to one location. It's about, we have a philosophy that we are going to encourage or direct people to park in areas where they are then encouraged to walk the downtown and enjoy the downtown and get exposure to the rest of downtown. So even though I'm only going to one spot, the Park Once is still applicable, and I think, I wouldn't like us to lose sight of that in wherever this goes because I do believe to, I think Rob spoke of it a little bit, that you might not realize what it is now, but when it's gone and people are only going to one block on State Street and that's all, you'll realize it pretty quickly. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Higgins?
Just a question to staff. Can you do a pilot ordinance in just the funk zone or just Coast Village and not have it apply to the rest of the, I mean, I know that you can, will you?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Higgins, we're going to do our best to put an ordinance together for the entire city that takes everybody's comments into consideration. It can certainly have different considerations for different areas of the city. You know, one thing I heard is build flexibility into the ordinance. I used the example of the city of Ventura earlier. Their ordinance is very simple. It's, you know, valet parking can happen with a permit issued by staff, basically, and then it's up to staff to develop the operating parameters. So if it was something like that, it's something that could evolve over time and be flexible. So that could be a potential way that we go with this.
Okay, any other closing comments from staff? Derek, Rob, anybody? Okay, that's it. Move on to our administrative agenda. Staff hearing officer liaison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's actually been a couple of meetings since we met last in June, and both of them were full of the usual front and interior setback modifications that were still consistent with the existing development in the neighborhood. In both those meetings, the one, there was an item of interest in both of them just for size and scope, really. On the July 8th meeting last week, a whole bunch of improvements for 1187 Coast Village Road, which is on the downhill side where FedEx and a bunch of other businesses, but a bunch of exterior alterations and deckwork, which I think will, didn't have any problem passing through, which will only improve that particular plaza. And then on June 24th, the 3869 AUD project, which is the state, the church demolition and senior housing project sailed through just fine. The modifications that needed, I think, were just parking and bicycle because bicycle's part of that equation, too. But 16 parking versus 58, and Ms. Riordan had no problem tweaking a couple of things but making those findings based on, obviously, the demographics of the seniors, and they'll have their own set of shuttles and the adjacent services that are nearby. So that, I know, I know we're tracking that or watching that with interest for a bunch of other reasons, too, but one of them will certainly be how many seniors are actually driving or not driving and if that 16, 16-capacity parking arrangement actually works out for that 58 units. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. Let's see, as far as ABR, I think we circulated a little notice to look at the meeting of the 6th where Senior Planner Jaime Limone responded to questions from the chair relative to the areas that ABR were responsible for or could be involved in relative to land use and other items, and I believe you attended the meeting.
Yes, I was there.
And if you have not looked at it, I think it's a pretty good, a very good primer, I think, and the interaction between the questions that the ABR had and the responses of staff were very good to keep in mind. There is an appeal coming up next Tuesday on 1818 Castillo Street. This was ABR-approved. The appeal, I believe, is involved both parking, the number of parking cars parked as well as a third-story element, I believe. But that's on the city council agenda for next Tuesday. Let's see, Commissioner, let's see, we have HLC. Just one comment on HLC, I guess, that I saw from the AUD standpoint. Sheila Lodge is not here, but there was an initial positive conceptual review of a project on the, right across from the Paradise Cafe on the Graviota property mixed-use project, which came in and received favorable comments, initial concept, and this would be coming to planning commission next for our comments. And I think that's about it on projects. And then we have, there is a subcommittee of Commissioner Schwartz and Jordan and myself that have a subcommittee, a housing committee that meets with staff, and we're having our third meeting coming up this next Monday. And I'm not going to be here, but for our Thursday meeting, but perhaps either Commissioner can give you an update on topics that we talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Monday this week, I attended the Water Commission meeting, just a few highlights, and members of the public may have already seen that on Tuesday of this week, following the Water Commission meeting, the city council did approve to move forward with the $55 million price tag for reactivation, redesign and reactivation of our D cell plant. It looks as though with the continued drought that that's going to be in the picture for us at this point, and as Mr. Hagmark was quoted in the media, saying that it will help bring reliability and redundancy to our system. Along those lines, we did achieve a remarkable 40% conservation in the month of June. Now, there's the good news and the bad news to that, that is the good news. The bad news, according to Mr. Hagmark, is that the significant loss to revenues for the city associated with a 40% conservation mean that we're really struggling to secure the revenues we need to support the full portfolio of water supply that we need. So on the one hand, D cell is the most expensive water we could generate or have access to, and our groundwater is the least expensive, so to speak, of course, separate from conservation. And on that note, and I may have mentioned this last month, but now that it's moving forward, I'll just provide an update on, and that is that Joshua's group is securing a new employee to do an inventory, among other things, of all of our groundwater wells. We don't have that ironically today, and so we don't know where all our wells are and which ones are operating effectively and that we can actually tap once we get more water.
You mean, private wells or city-public wells?
All of the above, but mostly private, but still in the city, we don't know where all the wells are, so we don't know who's dipping their straws into the groundwater entirely, and that's something that Joshua Hagmark's group is looking into. So there's so much more than that that came out of the meeting. As most members of the public may know, Mike Jordan was appointed to begin service on the Water Commission. He attended on Monday. So he and I will talk about how to give readouts going forward since we're both at that same meeting. And then lastly, on a separate note, Commissioner Campanella and I have begun conversations with staff on multifamily design guidelines. We've had a particular interest in this for some years, and as the commission will recall, Jaime Limone provided us some skeletal information about some changes that the city of Santa Monica has made in its methodology of contextual analysis on compatibility review. So Mr. Campanella and I are pursuing that with Mr. Limone and the city of Santa Monica. So we may be taking a road trip soon, we haven't figured that all out yet, to do a look-see and sit-down with Santa Monica staff and Mr. Limone to talk about that and hopefully bring some perhaps new best practices back to Santa Barbara, but stay tuned for more on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned.